Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative matters that I need to attend to. First off, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. Our meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes, not as a verbatim transcript. So when you come to the podium, please identify yourself each time and speak clearly into the microphone so that everyone can hear. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table near the door. The way it works is that we call it, the case is called. When it's called, the applicant or their representative comes to the podium, identifies himself or herself, states their address, takes a breath. Then they get sworn and then they present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, the members of the board have an opportunity to ask questions, engage in dialogue, or otherwise participate in the process of the presentation of the case. Once that has been concluded, the case is then open to public input. We've identified so far three categories of public input. And we take those wishing to speak in favor of the application first. And we ask if there's more than one person, that they line up along the west wall so that you can keep going and we can keep moving along. When we've heard from everyone or anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the application, then we ask anyone or everyone who wants to speak in opposition to the application to follow the same process, line up, come to the podium one at a time. And then the third category is those people who are neither in favor of nor opposed to the application, but want to talk to us about the application or something that pertains to the application. And when those people have been heard, then the public portion, input portion of the hearing is closed, the app, or the, is concluded. The applicant then has a chance to return to the podium and to address any points that were raised during the public input portion. Once the applicant is concluded with that, then the public hearing is closed. During the public input portion, all comments are directed to members of the board and the board as a whole, not to the applicant. And there's no discussion with the applicant or engaging in any back and forth with the applicant or any others who may be present. Once the hearing has been closed, we'll move on to the next case on the agenda. Once all the cases have been heard, the board will take a short recess, the duration of which will be announced and will be dependent in part on what time it is and how long we've been going. And after that recess is concluded, then the board will return and deliberate each case in the order for which the applicant, the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicants remain present. So if the applicant on the first case on the agenda has left and the applicant for the second case is still present, we'll take the second case first and we'll move down the agenda in that order for the applicants who are present. Once we've concluded all the cases for applicants who've remained, then we'll go back to the top of the agenda and deliberate on the cases that, for the, which the applicant has already left. During the deliberation portion of the meeting, there is no further public input unless it is specifically requested by the board. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberation. And if you wish to leave but are curious as to what was decided, you're welcome to either catch us on cable or you can call into the zoning and planning department office tomorrow after 9:00 a.m. and they'll be glad to tell you what our decision was on the application. So having said that, we have one member who's absent tonight. And I was absent last month. So for those two cases that are, are tabled, if they are taken off the table tonight, then there would be five members of the board who would be deliberating and making a decision with respect to that case. All right, can we call our first case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1911-1. Upon the matter of request by Pierpoint Visual Graphics, acting as agent for Rochester Regional Health Immediate Care for Area Variances to install a freestanding panel sign exceeding maximum permitted square footage and height on premises 2701 Culver Road in an R6 residential district.
Hello, I'm Scott Zappi. I'm the owner of Pierpoint Visual Graphics, representing Rochester Regional Health, Immediate Care. They're looking to have a non-illuminated-
Before you get in, your address, sir, and then pause a moment.
My address? 15 Elser, E.L.S.E.R., Terrace, Rochester, New York, 14611.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Now you may proceed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. They're looking to install a non-illuminated post and panel, double-sided sign, which would be approximately 42 inches by 96 inches, the face of the sign, and six and a half feet off the ground.
Like the picture that was submitted with the application?
Correct, yes.
And earlier, one other question was raised by Mr. Antini in a discussion with me about, what about the other tenants of that building? If they want to put up a sign?
If they want to put up a sign, I don't know, have to go through the proper channels, I guess.
Well, the question is, the sign ordinance is in effect because we want to minimize the number of signs that are cluttering up the landscape in town.
Right.
All right? So if there are six tenants in that building and we're going to have six signs out in front, because once they, the other tenants are going to say, well, you let Rochester Urgent Care have one, why can't I have one? My question is, and the suggestion that was made was, can other tenant signs be added below that?
Um, they'd have like, maybe like a foot of signage underneath the space because of the, of the two foot from the snow that's allowed, you know? And they could, we could add something to the bottom of it if they wanted to. It's more because of the urgent care visibility. It's actually smaller than a temporary sign, it's up there now.
Yeah, and I, and I get it that, you know, somebody who's going to urgent care needs to be able to find it really easy. And that as you're driving, particularly as you're driving south on Culver towards that building, you're not really noticing the huge sign that's up on the side of the building that we previously approved. So having it there, and I also understand that, you know, if there was an accountant in there at one point, and if the accountant says to his customers, well, you know, you just come down Culver and look for the urgent care sign and pull in there. I, I realize that that's a viable alternative to putting up another sign. But I just wanted to know, does this sign allow for any expansion to include others?
It could, I mean, it could re, we could actually reconfigure the existing sign because it's vinyl graphics on there, you can remove the vinyl graphics and reconfigure the sign if, you know, need be.
Okay.
Not to extend the actual size of the sign itself.
All right, but right now, the only thing we have is this application for the immediate care.
Right.
Right. Okay. And it's roughly going in the same spot where the other one is right now?
Correct, yes, yes. They might put like a little landscaping around it, perhaps flowers or something if that's, but no, no lighting.
Are they open at night?
Uh, they're open until nine, so.
So is there any other, I mean, I'm just thinking like-
That's the, you know, the thing, you know, they don't want to, they assume that it'd be more apt to pass without saying, we're going to have illuminated signage, you know? They would like to, but they're not gonna. They want to have just the sign so at least people know where it is during the day, easier to identify. But they didn't want to, you know, add, add another, you know, monkey in a wrench per, adding illumination to the signage.
I mean, I'm just curious that, you know, somebody who gets hurt urgently at eight o'clock at night, driving down the street, a non-illuminated sign-
Well, the letters, the letters would be reflective, so reflect the light in it.
Oh, they're reflective letters?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, I didn't realize that from what was said.
Yeah, the words were in.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open the matter to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about signs, urgent care, Culver Road, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the next case. Thank you, sir.
Hey, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1911-2. Upon the matter of request by Austin Miller for area variances to install front yard fencing with less than required front setback exceeding maximum permitted height and linear footage and non-conforming fence type on premises 71 Shore Drive in an R1 residential district.
Hello, my name is Austin Miller. I live at 71 Shore Drive, Rochester, New York, 14622.
You raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so, not exactly too sure where to start. So my proposed project is replace an existing fence that was built previously to us owning the home. We just moved in a couple of months ago. It is in the quote-unquote "front yard", which is, if you've seen the house or the layout of the house, it's, it's very different. We don't really have a front yard, there's just two side yards. But technically, just due to zone ordinance, ordinances, that's considered a front yard where the existing fence is. The existing fence is four feet high as of right now. And spots, it's broken down, it's just very ratty looking, it's not safe. So we are just trying to get a new fence put in, a dog ear style fence, ideally in a six-foot height. Currently, it's four. And the linear feet, the new one would be basically five feet more than the other one. It would just cover a little area for a gate so that our, our dog doesn't, obviously, go in there, we don't want him to. That's one of the variances. And then the other variance is the height. And the third variance would be the solid as compared to open type construction as it is, it's a solid fence now, it looks good. It just needs updating, major updating. I think that about covers the basis of what we're doing. Included pictures, just to kind of show, give a visual example of the area, the weird corner that it's on, the height. I also have a picture here of the fence type, the dog ear style fence that would be replacing the older one that's currently there. I think the last thing I would like to cover would be the setback, the one area where there's a setback. So the current fence is placed over the property line, as is. Obviously, that wasn't us that did that, but when we went to go replace the fence, obviously, we get, and all this, and we see that we're over a property line. So we're gonna, we plan on pushing that into the property line wherever that, right as that follows, because we want it to 45-degree angle that corner anyways. It's just very difficult to get in there and cut, maintain. So figured it's just dead space, just cut it at a 45, then we'll be within our boundaries. So it would be technically in that one spot because it, the way the road works, you see on the, on the map, it comes in, the fence, as compared to the property line. But in that one corner, the setback would be zero. So it would just be essentially right on that property line then, butting out of it.
And basically, your property ends at the top of that slope-
Yes.
-down to the road.
Yes. Not right at the top where it conjoins, but it's like a, at the corner, where the fence is now, there's like one foot where I can get a lawnmower around. So if we were to bring in that corner anyways to meet our property line and to 45, I would actually be able to get my lawnmower around it without falling down that big hill.
What's your total length going to be? Because there's three different numbers in here.
Uh, 125 linear feet.
25?
Yes. I think I, I did see that after I was already handed in. I think I put 130 at one point on the area variance.
On the, on the second page, it existing was 125 and the new will be 120-
Yeah, that was on the typo, I'm sorry.
On the application's 130, so I just-
No, 125.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about corner lots, fences, anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to the next case.
Next case on the agenda is ZB 1911-3. Upon the matter of request by Gloria Frederick, DBA, Awesome Wonders Christian Childcare for use, for a use variance to operate a religious childcare center and an area variance to install freestanding signage on premises 2841 Culver Road in an R1 residential district.
Gloria Frederick, 2841 Culver Road, for Awesome Wonders Christian Childcare.
If you'd raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. I was told before the meeting that you weren't going forward with respect to the area variance for the sign because you haven't found a design that you'd like.
Yes, not at this time.
Okay, all right. So you'd like us to table that application until you find a design for the sign, is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going for a proposal for CFO, for change of views, which it was already in use for a community center and church.
All right, this is in an R1 residential neighborhood, right?
Yes.
So childcare facility is not specifically referenced as being permitted use in the district, right? And that's why you need the variance?
Yes.
Okay. Is the, I wasn't clear from your application, is your corporation a for-profit corporation or a not-for-profit corporation?
It's for-profit.
For-profit, so this is a commercial daycare center?
Correct.
Okay. Now, I know that the Turkish Society sent a letter supporting your application, right?
Yes.
And you have a contract for the purchase of the property that's contingent upon us granting you a use variance to allow you to operate your business there, right?
Yes.
What isn't, what isn't specifically referenced in the materials that you submitted was dollars and cents information. You refer in general terms to the fact that it's too small to be a school, it's, would be too costly and prohibitively costly to renovate it and remodel it to be a permitted use. But there aren't any dollar figures with that. And then it's set, it indicates that it's been on the market for sale for four years with no buyers other than you expressing an interest in it. So I guess the question I have for our counsel, is that sufficient?
How far back does the, the date go, the, how long has it been on the market?
It's been on the market, I believe, four years, right? That's what your application indicated, right?
Yes, that's the information that I had received.
You were told it's been on the market four years, hasn't had any takers?
Well, not on the market, but it has been for lease. They had tenants leasing for the last seven years.
None of whom wanted to purchase the property?
Correct.
And nobody had, it, I thought it indicated that, that since they vacated it for their more spacious site, wherever that is, that it had been, they had been trying to sell it and had no takers.
Well, that was the information that I had received from the owner.
Right, okay.
So, you know, I can't, I can't tell you whether that meets the, the use variance standard because that's a question of fact for you to decide. But what I can tell you is that you need to determine that the property can't be used for any of the other allowable uses in the district. And, and so I would say you might consider whether the property was marketed and unable to find a buyer or, or tenant for any of the uses that are permitted in the district.
I'm looking at the instrument survey map that's attached to the application. It indicates a survey prepared by David Staub, Triple Point Land Surveying, Inc. It's dated July 5th, 2018. It indicates a one-story brick building with dimensions of, appears to be 58 feet by 33 at one end and 24, oh no, I'm sorry. 43? So based on those dimensions, it, given its past use as a church and then a, or a school and then a church, obviously, it would require considerable renovation in order to convert it into a single-family residence. With approximately, from the visual on the, the map, it looks like that would include about three-quarters of an acre of paved surface, right? It's all paved around it?
Yes.
It's too small for a firehouse, there's a big firehouse right up the street. It's too small for a church, the application indicates that. What are the other uses in the R1 district? School, it's too small for a school. I just can't recall off the top of my head what those other uses are.
You give me one moment, Mr. Chairman, I can find out for you. So the following are the permitted uses in the R1 district. Single-family dwellings, churches and places of worship, parish houses, convents, rectories and parsonages, private, non-profit elementary or secondary schools accredited by the New York State Department of Education, public hospitals, libraries, municipal and special district buildings, providing such, provide such buildings are not within 50 feet of adjoining lot line, fire stations without club facilities, farms, greenhouses, plant nurseries and riding stables, lawfully existing on the effective date of this chapter, home occupations. There are some conditions for the home occupations, which I don't think are relevant here. Private garages, public parks, swimming pools.
All right, is that, so, none of those uses would be appropriate at the property. A swimming pool would require the building to be razed, which your application indicates that raising the building and, and constructing new would be prohibitively expensive for the area and the, and the neighborhood, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to, your, your plan is to operate a religious daycare, or I should say, from the application, a daycare with a religious perspective?
Yes.
All right. And you're going to convert the interior space to that purpose without the need for major renovations? Because mostly, you're using the space and bringing in what you need to add to that space in order to accommodate the children that you'd be caring for, right?
Yes, correct.
And how many children would you plan on, having served at, serve, how many children would you plan on serving at the site?
Uh, 45.
45. And you're regulated and licensed by the Office of Children and Family Services?
Well, I'm in a process of an application going through, but I have to receive the CFO in order to proceed.
All right, but-
The process, yes.
You would be?
Yes.
And you'd be subject to also regulation and inspection by the Department of Social Services as well, correct?
Yes, New York State Office of Children and Family Services.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? I seem to have talked in for a while.
Just a point of correction, I think you have 46 indicated here. You have 16, 15, and 15. So is that, should be 15 per each group? You have 16 four-year-olds, 15 school-age kids, and 15 30-year-olds.
Was 45 to keep it for a small childcare facility.
Okay, so we have, so it should be 40, 45.
Yes.
Okay. Do you plan on providing infant care?
Yes, infants to age 12.
So, because I don't see a room designated or account designated for infant care on your, in your application.
Well, that's in the future for the infants.
Would that require renovations?
No, there's just one classroom that's on the first floor.
The 20 by 22 classroom?
Yes.
What I don't know is, is this building the correct size for 45 kids? I'm gonna, 45 plus, 45, yeah, well, 45 is max.
That's part of what OCFS looks into. They have requirements for size based on number of children and they have requirements of, to children based on different ages and things. There's a whole slew of regulations that they have.
Mr. Chairman, should we have that to consider? Whether or not we should issue the variance?
Well, I think, obviously, if we issue the variance, then they have to, to open, they have to have a certification from OCFS. So OCFS will determine the sufficiency of it. If OCFS doesn't give them the certification that she needs to open, then she won't open and the variance will lapse because it won't have been used, right? Lapse is if it's not used within a year?
Correct. Depending on the ages, it's anywhere from 750 to 1,000 square feet for a full classroom. Which, if you're looking at 3,800 living square feet, that's about four classrooms, which I think is what they're asking for. I don't know what, with the rest, total square footage is over 7,000?
Yes, and it's 45 square feet for a child.
Right.
Yeah.
So the, I guess my question is, there's the living square footage of 3,800 and the total square footage is 7,000. Is that the entire lot?
No, that's the building.
Okay.
Yes.
So the extra space would be unoccupied?
The basement.
I see, that's counted in there?
They have classrooms downstairs in the basement.
Um, there's a couple of small playgrounds outside?
Yes.
Um, which, to my knowledge right now, are available to public use? Do those continue to be available to public use? And you, you mentioned in your application that you've been operating for 15 years in family, group, family and center facilities. Is this a relocation of a center or opening a new center?
Well, I'm opening a new. I have operated in home childcare and some years ago into a center.
I'm familiar with FCC providers and things like that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it to public input, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. When you get to the podium, please give your name and address.
Good evening, um, my name is Jeff Benjamin, I'm a resident of East Aronacoyt, my address is seven-ninety-three Hellendale Road, um, I've been a resident of Ra- of Aronacoyt for about twenty years, um, currently, uh, I own my own business, Ubiquity Enterprise, I'm here to speak on the support of the daycare center. I realize, um, a few weeks ago, how important a daycare center is in, in Aronacoyt, because I have a grandson that, uh, goes to Hellendale and he's there from eight AM to eleven AM, which is a half-day, so it takes a toll on my wife, because she's transporting him, um, half of the day from the, uh, from the elementary school to the YMCA. And there are probably, uh, a number of parents that have that obstacle of transporting their kids, and I'm not sure if there's a full-time childhood or pre-K for children in East Aronacoyt. There's a number of reasons why we should support this application, not only we're providing a good service, but Ms. Frederick will be creating a number of job opportunities for individuals that, um, want to be in that particular field. Secondly, I feel strongly that it, it creates a, a better social environment for our young children to have, uh, a cultural, spiritual experience at a young age, because as you know, today's society, we're challenged with so many different obstacles with technology and different backgrounds and social networks, so I think that, um, having a facility that have, uh, a number of, um, tools for kids to, uh, achieve higher education is very important. So, um, I, I think very strongly that we should, you know, support this here project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Step right up.
Hi, my name is Sheila Rogers, I'm a registered nurse, I've been a nurse in this area probably about thirty years, um, I oversee about twelve registered nurses and twelve LPN nurses. And one of the biggest challenges that I've noticed, um, with the nurses that are moved into performance management because of attendance and things like that is childcare, they do not, um, have the access on this side of town, I actually work, my office is at Hudson and Titus, um, and Rochester Regional Health, um, is, is a huge, huge organization and, um, and that's what I'm a part of, and the nurses, um, they struggle with finding reputable, um, indecent childcare, and so I'm in favor of having this childcare, um, facility in this area for the Rochester Regional Health System nurses.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Mrs. Rogers, excuse me, I'm sorry, um, just your address for the record, sorry, I didn't get your address. I'm over here.
Uh, my address is one-seventy-seven Burlington Avenue, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-one-nine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up.
Uh, hello, my name's John Pitts, I live at one-sixty-four Vinton, um, in the town of Aronacoyt, which is a properly, property directly behind the proposed, uh, uh, child daycare. Uh, over a year, I've lived in that, that, the house for, it's been fifteen years, and over the fifteen years, I've fought with multiple occupants on privacy, on security, um, and safety, it's been several churches, it's been, um, there has been a daycare in there, not sure how that, that happened, but there was one in there, um, funeral homes, uh, funeral services being held there, um, I've pled with every single occupant, just to come to find out that the actual owners, the Turkish Society, which they said anything to do with cleaning up the area, um, any type of safety, any type of fencing, um, anything to do with that has, it falls on the tenants, you know, that being said, like the, the hedgerow that travels right along my property, because from my driveway, I could see the backyard or, or the back parking lot, I guess would be, um, and over the years, it's just been garbage from every tenant, um, even right now, I, I was gonna take pictures before I came here, there are some old toys that are thrown behind it, there's, um, just trash, um, not sure if it's from the, the current people that have been in there, because every, there's been someone in that building every day, um, so I don't know what's going on in there now, maybe they're cleaning it up, maybe they're getting it ready for the proposed, uh, daycare, um, but for me, you know, you only get one chance to make a first impression, my first impression as a, as a backdoor neighbor, is they're doing the same thing that every single other occupant has done, and that's make a, well, a dilapidated building look even more dilapidated by whatever they're finding inside, throwing outside, or whatever they're bringing to prepare the inside, leaving it outside, um, it, it, it looks atrocious, I've taken pictures in the past, over the past four years or five years, emailed it to the town, emailed it to the, uh, previous town supervisor, never got one word, uh, of what's going on with the building, there was always push to, you need to call and contact the Turkish Society, which I've done that, like I said, almost, um, the fourteen years I've, I've lived there, I've lived in Aronacoyt for like twenty-three years, so, you know, it, it's just, my main thing is like, you know, the, the old broken toys that are already starting to litter the property, so I can just imagine what's gonna happen once it's a full-blown daycare, um, current toys, current whatever, I mean, I'm not opposed to kids or kids, uh, having a safe, uh, place to, to, to go and a parent having a safe place to take their children, that's, that's, you know, not my agenda, my agenda is just to make sure that if, if it is gonna happen, and if it does happen, that they need to do something with that sparse hedgerow that runs along the property, that I've been trimming at least my side and the top the whole fifteen years I've lived there, and having to dispose of, you know, the weeds and, and, you know, it's just a breeding ground for, uh, you know, most people in Aronacoyt know that there's some issue with rats already in certain parts of Aronacoyt, thankfully, I have not had that issue yet, you know, other small area rodents is, is one thing, but when you start getting things with daycare and children and disposing, uh, diapers or, or whatever they need to do, then there's gonna have to be a dumpster there, which is gonna, um, add a, yet another eyesore that I have to look at from my front yard, and I have a twelve-year-old daughter, um, you know, that she frequents that little playground over there with, with some of her friends, so during the full-blown daycare, w- w- will she not be able to even use that or just be kind of squeezed out, because it's, uh, I don't know what the, the amount of children is gonna be there at any given point, um, y- like I said, I don't have a problem with kids going somewhere safe, I'm, I'm all about that, I'm, I'm a, a century two for, um, Monroe One Bosse's, and I've been doing safety and security for years, so, and working in school, there's like, you know, so that's not the issue, the issue is, for me, is the property, the property line, how well are they gonna maintain it if they're gonna maintain it at all, because like I said, the years I've been to, been there, it's never been maintained other than by myself, cleaning up and then complaining, cleaning up and then complaining, taking pictures and complaining years and years and years, so, and, and again, like I said, um, to start off, you get one chance to make a first impression, and right now, my first impression is whatever they either found in that building or brought to the building is just thrown in the back, and that's something I look at every day with whoever's been in and out of that building like over the last few weeks, that's it.
All right, um, just one point of information to share with you, there is a ordinance in the town that requires if you have a dumpster serving a facility, that it has to be enclosed.
Right.
You know, fenced in enclosure so that the dumpster is not visible.
Right, and the last few occupants that did have a dumpster there, because they didn't wanna go through the variance, they ended up removing the dumpster, and another, another point I wanted to, to make is that also through the years, that everyone that has occupied that, that space seems like it's okay for them, because that hedgerow is so sparse and it, it borders my backyard, that they feel free to step in and out of that property, because if it's a daycare, I'm assuming they're not gonna wanna smoke on their property, so what they do is they step into my property, smoke the cigarettes or whatever and throw it into my backyard, I don't smoke, and I've come home over like the years and just cigarette butts, I have cigarette butts and garbage, and, you know, I put my recycling receptacle in the back, I've went and emptied it on a Wednesday, pulled it to the back, and then they have a function going on there that day or that night, my, my garbage bin is full, you know, and I've pulled receipts out of there and I've called pizza places and everything, said, where did you deliver this to, they give me the address, and it just happens to be that, that, that building, so I'm, I'm just saying for the fifteen years I've been dealing with that, you know, is, you know, why I'm opposed to, uh, all right?
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is Karen Arva, I live at one-forty-three Vinton Road, I've been a resident there, um, for forty-five years, I wanted to first, um, tell you, I've been through this before, um, approximately thirty-seven plus years ago, when before the seventh day, um, before the Turkish Society bought the property, um, someone tried to come in and put a daycare there, and I went through the steps with the state to see what the rules and regulations are, and I'm not opposed to a daycare, I'm not opposed to children, there is a very fine daycare right on Perrin Drive, behind the church, uh, behind the church there between William Street and I don't know what the next street is, but it's right on Perrin Drive, um, I wanted to point out that this building was a school, but it was a school a hundred years ago, before there was a William Street, before there was a Vinton Road, and this is my major point of contention, it is too close to a, uh, county highway, Ra- uh, Culver Road is very busy and it is not under the jurisdiction, it's not, um, from the town of Aronacoyt, it's a, it's a county road, and it's bordered by Vinton Road and William Street, and they are too close to the property, the fence that's there, um, as far as the totlot, um, is not a proper fence, the daycare must have its own fenced, uh, play yard area, they cannot use the town's totlot, okay? Um, I also can tell you that when, uh, you apply to, um, for a CCO, uh, of occupancy or applying for a license for a daycare there, they will decide based on what you decide, okay, so your, your idea that they will determine whether or not it's a suitable place is incorrect, because they'll go off of what you decide as far as variance goes, okay?
Well, the var- the, let me just clarify that, the variance would allow for the establishment of a daycare facility on that site.
Okay.
Not, we do, we have no authority whatsoever to say how many children can be there, how many adults, all of that is done through the Office of Children and Family Services, they have extensive regulations.
I know.
Only they can determine that, all they're saying to her is, we're not even gonna look at your application until you, the town says you can put it there.
My other question is, I believe this is a double-lot property and that the, um, area that has the entrance is considered, um, commercial, and the area that she wants to put the building on is residential, and my concern is that if at some point, um, you allow the variance to put this there, um, and she suffers hardship and can't make a go of the daycare, then they're gonna be applying for a commercial, um, variance to make the whole area commercial. I also have a concern with parking, okay, because the entrance to the parking lot is on William Street, um, we've had problems with parking before, if you have forty-five children, even if there's multiple children in a family, you're gonna have parents parking on the street, they're not gonna park in the parking lot, I've been a parent too, you wanna get in, you wanna get out, you don't wanna putz around with a parking area, um, my biggest concern again is they'd have to have a separate play area, they cannot use the town's totlot for their play area, it's not fenced properly, and it would pose great liability upon the town if anyone were hurt while they were out there, and they are mandated to have the children outside for a certain number of time, uh, uh, half hour, hour per day, depending upon the weather, okay, I just believe that it's too close to Culver Road, there, it's a tragedy waiting to happen, also, it's my understanding that, um, the fire marshal, when he was there to inspect, because there, the funeral parlor was using it as a, um, a, a place to hold services, that it is not authorized to have food there, so my question is, how are you gonna feed these kids? You have no kitchen there, you have no suitable kitchen according to the fire marshal.
The application that you're referring to was in front of us several years ago, and the, uh, ban on having food in, in the premises was from the, uh, codes and regulations that pertain to funeral homes, not to the building itself, and that's what he, he was, his concern was that food would be brought into the premises in violation of what the laws and the regulations were that applied to funeral.
All right.
Homes and funeral operations, I remember that.
Going back to thirty-seven years ago, too, one of my concerns was, as the neighborhood said, um, there were rats at the time, okay, and it was simply because they were just, all they were doing was holding summer camps there, the kids didn't.
Was that when the Turkish Society, they purchased in nineteen-seventy-two, I think, so they already owned it?
It was later, it was, it was later than seventy-two, because I've been there forty-five years, I, they didn't purchase it in seventy-two, I've been there since seventy-four. It was, it was the last, the first people that I remember that were running so, um.
Nineteen-seventy-nine.
Okay.
The one they purchased.
Right, prior, prior to that, I knew it was a long time.
It's been forty years that they've owned it.
Right, and that, I never came forward to protest their buying it, okay, because before they purchased it, as I said, someone wanted to come through and put a daycare in there, and also somebody, there was a separate building on the side of it at that time, I'm getting off the, the subject here.
There were trailers that were in there at one point.
Right, and they wanted to put heavy equipment in there, doesn't mix with little kids, um, either way, it's, it's just not a suitable property for a daycare, and there is a daycare on Perrin, and actually, if the, if the totlot were allowed to be used as their play area, then the daycare that's on Perrin Drive, they have their own separate fenced-in play area, properly fenced, but then they could use it as well, because their property comes right out on William Street, so they could just walk right across and, and, and use that as well, it's, it's, it's a, a unique property, but it's not a good one for a daycare, I, I just see little kids getting away, darting out into the street, that fence on the totlot is just all it is, it's a barrier, it's just, uh, logs, it's not proper fencing, so I, you know, as a taxpayer for forty-five years, I don't wanna be responsible for somebody, for the town being sued because somebody darted through the fence into the road, or even worse yet, a car comes careening through the fence into the front yard, okay, happens all the time, happened where I worked, car came down, it was Empire Boulevard, came down, came right through our parking lot, was stopped by a number of cars, but the woman had a seizure, it happens, okay, and I want a safer place for children, okay, this is not the proper space for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Robert Monigal. My address is five six five Washington Avenue, Rochester one four six one seven. I am uh appearing before you today to speak on behalf of the Aronacoid Presbyterian Church. Which is right across the street from this property. And I am also the.
Across William Street.
Yes, across William Street. And I am also the board president for Creative Beginnings Childcare Center, which resides in Aronacoid Presbyterian Church. Uh. I do not claim to be a childcare professional. But I can tell you from watching our director of this center for the past six six years trying to operate. A childcare center. Uh this is, that that building is going to create more problems than it's worth in trying to get the business going. Um fir- first off, as a point of clarification for myself. The subject property, is that zone commercial or residential?
According to the application that was submitted to us, it was indicated that it's in a residential neighborhood.
That's correct. It's own residential.
Okay, I think you've already answered your own question. Wouldn't this be a change of use for planning board? Because what they're looking at doing would fall under a, a uh, a uh, you know, possible uh uh commercial use.
It's a use variance. This board has jurisdiction over use variances.
Okay. Then what you would be doing is you'd be zoning a residential property as a essentially a uh a uh commercial use. Because in-home daycare has a limit of five people.
Right.
We're talking forty-five. Our center is currently registered to handle about forty. But right now, we only have fifteen. Uh. As far as I know, from the records that I've been able to find. The applicant's uh current license only allows her to do in-home care. Uh and this, this facility would not be approved as an in-home care center because it is a. By all intents and purposes, you look at it, it is a commercial property.
Right, it, she's, what I understood her to indicate was that she currently operates an in-home. Facility that she's licensed with the Office of Children and Family Services.
And and I fully understand that.
And some other people are trying to put together this commercial daycare center. That would be licensed and operated under the auspices of the Office of Children and Family Services. Subject to all the same regulations which you obviously are very familiar with.
Oh yes.
So.
Uh. I guess I'm sharing some of the same same concerns because I see them and I hear about them every day. You're gonna have upwards of forty-five parents coming in, multiple vehicles. We already have a problem ourselves trying to regulate folks. We tell them, you have to go around and come in on Perrin and park in the bigger lot. Now they pull into our staff-only William Drive lot. And we've had a couple of instances where parents have hit our staff's cars. They've moved cones that we've, you know, put up to try to, you know, keep, keep, keep people from, you know, driving through. Um. And just from, you know, from the point of a zoning board. Of course, you look at, you know, not not wanting to have three or four of one thing right, right next to each other. You know, it's like, yeah, it's like, I know we got Burger King, McDonald's, Taco Bell, blah, 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 blah. But you've got our daycare center at twenty-eight eighty-one. Right across the street, you're gonna approve another one. And you've got Saint Saint Cecilia's running a daycare down. Couple hundred feet da- you know, down the road. There's. By just, you know, looking up a directory, there's at least seven to eight centers. North of one oh four that are registered daycare centers. Uh, there's plenty more within the city bounds. I know that child childcare is an issue. It's the, it's more the cost to the family. I just, I caution you to take all these items into consideration when. Looking to grant or, you know, deny this, this variance.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Hello, my name's Bruce Stanley, one forty-nine Vinton Road, Rochester, New York, one four six two two. Well, I live right up the uh street from the uh said property and my main concern is the uh tot lot. It's right, it's uh right there in the corner and uh I'm assuming, and I could be wrong on this, but I think the uh daycare center wants to use that. Uh use that playground. My concern uh is the the safety and security of of the uh children at the daycare center.
Let me, let me, because this was brought up earlier, so let me just, I'm looking at the survey map that I referenced earlier that was provided as part of the application. According to the survey map, that the tot lot is owned by the town of Aronacoid.
Yes.
Not a part of the property that's the subject of this application.
Yeah, that's, that's the one.
So any use of the the tot lot is not a part of anything pertaining to this property. If that's the plan and if OCFS regulations require that there be a. A play area, it would be up to the Office of Children and Family Services to determine whether or not there's appropriate. Great agreements between the daycare operator and the town. That would allow that to function as the, and whether it met the Office of Children and Family Services standards. Or whether the, they might require the daycare to put their own on the, on the property.
Right.
That meets their standards.
Right.
But um the tot lot is not a part of what is in front of us.
Okay, that's what I wa- that was my main concern and I didn't realize that before. But I didn't wanna see a mix of public people and the children at the daycare both using the same facility at the same time. So that was my, my concern.
And and a question was raised earlier about the uh property itself. Is is this two tax parcels or one? Because the survey indicates that it is a part of Town Lots thirty-four and forty-one, but from the way the map is prepared. It appears to me that those portions of the two lots have been subdivided into one lot at some point in the past.
That's my understanding. It's one lot.
Okay, so it's one lot, okay.
Okay, that was my main concern. The other thing uh, as the other gentleman would say, uh, you know, we do have a daycare center right, right there. And it's not at capacity and I don't really see the reason why we need a second one right next to it. But that's my opinion and I just wanted to share it.
Well, I mean, it's interesting that that those points were brought up because I'm recalling when they. Uh had an application to put a Walgreens in at the corner of Hudson and Ridge. And I said, well, we already have a Walgreens down at the corner of of uh Culver and Ridge. And we have a Rite Aid right across the street and we have a Rite Aid down it. And I was told that, oh, that's a totally improper question. Because if, and we're now putting a Jiffy Lube up on Ridge Road near Portland. When a Jiffy Lube on Hudson Avenue uh uh and Ridge uh was, went out of business and was eventually taken over by Valvoline. So um, you know, the it, the number of businesses in the area that are of a similar kind. Is is not, we have, there are five factors that are required to be considered for a use variance. The first is that the owner of the property cannot realize a reasonable return on their investment. And that means that they've put, they've purchased the property and they've put a certain amount of uh, you know, money into improvements. And selling it or remodeling it, they can't get back their money, plus a reasonable rate of return. Uh that there are unique circumstances that affect the property. So that it's not uh a, something where we say, oh, well, for this spot, it's okay, but for the one next door that's similar. Uh it's not okay. That would be uh unlawful, but there's something unique about the property involved. The sec- third one is that it won't alter the character of the neighborhood. To the extent that there's already several daycare centers in the, in the neighborhood. Then it would seem that that would be compatible because there are others there. Uh, I'm not sure about that yet, but that's, and then that it's not a self-created uh hardship. Now, if she'd gone ahead and bought the building and then come to us, that would be self-created because she would have bought it knowing the way it was zoned. But she's, her purchase of the property is contingent upon uh being given a variance. So if we deny the variance, the purchase falls through, the property remains owned by the Turkish Society and presumably stays on, on the market. So those are the factors that we have to take into account. And as I said earlier, we don't have any control over how it's operated, how many children are there, what the requirements are, anything like that. We have nothing to do with that. It's, can she put it there, assuming that she can otherwise open the business and run it?
Okay, thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about daycare? Alright, or anything else related to the application, but neither, not with respect specifically to whether you're in favor or opposed to it? Step right up.
My name is Ramona Hardy. Um. My name is Ramona Hardy. I'm a grandmother.
And you live, I'm sorry.
And I live at twenty-five Franklin Street, Rochester, New York, one four six oh four. I'm a grandmother and my daughter, she's in the nursing field and she has three kids. And she needs, and what I do all day long is run one here, one there, one here and one there after school. Because they are different ages, but they're close. And what I always told her is we can find a a sitter where all of them can go at the same time. It would be a great opportunity for me, a great stress reliever. So when I heard about Ms. Gloria opening up her daycare. I know definitely that my grandkids will apply to go there. Because my daughter, she stays right off of Culver and it's for this, this side of town versus way over on the west side. Or way over in Henrietta, you know, like Brighton, like that there. So as a parent, I I'm for the daycare as a, as a grandmother. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to address the application? Seeing none, would you like to respond to the comments that were made during the public input portion of the hearing?
Yes, uh first of all, I just would like to just say that um. I have only been in there just for a couple of months. And there has been no operation there, you know, for childcare. And some of the um comments that I've heard, um I just want them to know that. I don't think that um we will ever have a facility that's trashy, you know, and and not to be cared of. If it, if anything, we will be improving the um, the property. Um. And as far as the uh play area, we have a a future proposal for our own uh playground on the left side of the building.
Left side of the building as you're facing it from Culver?
Yes.
So that would be to the south of the building?
Yes. And it would be fenced in. And Office of Children and Family Services do not require that um you have to have a play area. It's just that you have to have the children outside uh uh up to like fifteen to twenty minutes per day. I mean, you could even take the children for a walk.
I I'm just curious if you, if you can help me. As you're looking at the property from Culver Road, you're indicating that that would be to the south?
Well, it's the opposite side of the uh play area from the town, the town's uh playground.
Oh, so it'd be to the north, to the right, as you're looking from Culver?
Yes.
At the building, okay. Because I was gonna say, there's not a whole lot of room to the south, but there's tons of room to the north.
Yes.
So your plan would be to put a a playground area or an outdoor player or whatever it is. On the, on the property that would be yours and not be relying on the town lot property?
Yes.
Okay.
And the parking lot, I mean, it belongs to the property and I mean, there's ninety-five parking spaces there.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll uh close the hearing with respect to that matter and move on to the next uh item on our agenda.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB one nine one one dash four. Upon a matter of request by Michael and Lauren Reed for area variances to maintain two existing sheds with less than required side setbacks. On premises four fifty-four Pert Avenue in an R two residential district.
Uh Michael Reed at uh owner at four fifty-four Pert Avenue.
Raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Uh we're, we're here requesting a a zer- um a variance setback. Um we're a pre-existing non-conforming lot that when we moved into our our house, there was an existing shed. That's noted on our our survey map, that we was tipping over, we tore it down and found out that we needed to get a zoning. Variance because we removed the shed that was there. Um so we're just requesting that so we can pull the building permit to get that permitted and um meet the town approvals. And that is on the south side of our property line. And then on the north side of our property line, our house doesn't even meet the minimum setback from the property line. So we put a garden shed, one of those plastic sheds that you pick up, it's about the size of this podium. Horizontal to put shovels and rakes and things like that and to stop our children from running down that side of the house, past an air-conditioned um compressor. And into the front yard. Um and we were told that that doesn't need a permit because it's less than thirty square feet, but it needs to re- to meet the setback requirements. Because it's on the property, but like I said, our house doesn't even meet the setbacks because it was built nineteen twenty before any of these rules existed.
The frame shed that's shown on the survey map that's in the, on the east end of the property. That appears to go a couple of feet over the line into somebody else's property, is that still there?
Um that's gone. That was removed. We removed that one we moved in, correct. And that's why we now need two sheds because this larger shed was ten by ten. Um and we, we replaced, and then that one was ten by ten and then this one that was up in existing was an eight by eight. And we replaced it with a six by ten shed just because it would be narrower and fit along the, the property line better versus sticking out into the, into the property.
And if I understand the application correctly, what you're asking for is a zero. A variance to allow for a zero setback for these to butt up on the property lines on the north and the south side?
Correct, so they just would go up against the fences that were there. That um on the north side, it is our neighbor's fence, so they're inches from the property line. So technically, the corner would be sitting right on the property line. It still misses it by about an inch if the survey map and the the surveyors are correct.
I take it that the fence on the south side is yours?
Uh the fence on the south side is ours, so it would be about six inches off of that fence. And that was in the exact same location the existing um shed was. And um on the north side of the property where it's the question of the property line, the the current homeowners, Joe and Mary Hasenhauer, I always say that wrong. Have given us a letter saying that they don't care that the shed that we put there is there and that they are fine with it.
Do you have that with you?
I do.
Could you hand that to Mr. Scott and he'll pass it around?
And they were to be listed as co-applicants, so I think that's how we wrote the letter.
Oh, they, there was, that was part of the. Oh, they, there was, that was part of the application. I remember seeing that, yes. Okay. So that letter is the letter that was submitted on October 22nd. It was, the application came in, I think, October 15th and then that got added?
Correct.
Oh, it's the same. Okay, then we don't need to see that because we already have.
Perfect.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
Did they have to be a co-applicant because it was over the property line? Did I read that?
Yeah, it's like two inches or three inches.
That's correct. So technically, they go about half a foot over the property line, so essentially, you're giving them zero setback up to their property line and then the neighbor is in it as a joint applicant to get zero setback on their side as well.
And then if the neighbor sells, the next tenant would have, owner would have to do the same thing?
Correct.
That would depend on whether or not the new owner and the, um, the Reeds enter into an agreement that allows it to remain where it is because...
Correct. So they, the new owner would be able to, but they wouldn't be required to.
And, and some of this is, is, there are actually two pins on our lot and you talk to two different surveyors and each one's claims the other one is wrong. Um, in our front yard, there are two pins and they're four inches apart. So we're literally splitting hairs at this point in time saying which one of these is right. And I'm not spending the hundreds of dollars to have it resurveyed for a $49, for a $49 shed.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open this hearing to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about sheds or fences or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case and move on to the next item on our agenda, which I believe we've come to the end of the items that are on our agenda. There are two tabled matters. The first is case ZB 1910-4 relating to property at 83 Governor Terrace. Is there a motion to take this matter off of the table?
I make a move that we take this motion off the table?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I abstained from that because I wasn't here at the last meeting. So the motion carries five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention. And we have one board member absent. We don't yet have an alternate member.
No, sir.
Yes, okay.
Tabled item case number ZB 1910-4, upon the matter of request by Jean M. Peyton for area variances to maintain a front yard concrete parking pad that exceeds maximum permitted driveway square footage in front yard and to park a recreational vehicle in the front yard seasonally with less than required front setback on premises 83 Governor Terrace in an R1 residential district.
Now...
Hi, my name is Jean, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me one minute. I, um, in reviewing the minutes that were prepared with respect to the October meeting, I note the minutes indicate that the public hearing pertaining to this matter was closed. So is there a motion from the board to reopen and hear further from the applicant?
I make a move that we reopen the public hearing to hear from the applicant.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And again, I abstained because I was not here last month, so. Motion carries five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention and one member remains absent. So now...
Okay. Uh, my name is Jean Peyton. I live at 83 Governor Terrace in Rochester, 14609.
If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Well, here I am again and I, we left here with some, I had some homework to do. Um, the, the question is whether the RV can be parked, if I remember the complaint. I didn't get a copy of the complaint, it was just read to me, so I'm trying to remember what it said. But I believe the, the, the main portion of the complaint was that the RV could not be parked in the front yard, if I remember, I don't think anybody still has that complaint or not. Um, but I, in the zoning board, it, it kind of clearly states to me that, say, it's from April 1st to November 1st of any calendar year, one recreational vehicle may be parked or stored on the front yard driveway or other hard surface parking area. Um, so I guess I'm kind of hoping we can remove that from the discussion and move on to the, um, zero setback question.
Well, again, I was just, I've read the minutes and I wasn't here, but as I understand, one of the questions from what you just read is this, is the other hard surface?
Correct.
As opposed to the driveway?
Correct.
Appropriately located for you, for that use?
Correct.
If I could just clarify, the issue isn't with the fact that there is a recreational vehicle parked in the front of the property. You are correct that that is allowable during certain times of the year. Uh, the issue is with the fact that the concrete pad that is parked on puts the front yard paving, paved parking surface over the 35% allowable and it's also less than the four foot required setback.
Which is what is stated here, but it also stated that about the parking in the front too, so that's why I was clarifying that. So, so nothing really has changed. The RV is still the same size, the concrete pad is still where it was. Um, Mr. Evans, you had recommended to go look at, well, I think the board did, to look at if there was places that we could store the RV during the summertime. We took your suggestion and went to Cube Storage on Hudson Avenue. They cannot meet the need for that, they don't have the size in that area. We contacted, um, I think it's Empire Storage, which is across from, uh, Mario's Basil's over that area. They do have summer spots, but when we looked at it, it's all dirt and if it rains down there, I don't think we're going to get a 3200, 32,000 pound machine out of there with mud. Um, there is another area on Linden Avenue that states it can house RVs. We just haven't gotten over there honestly during the time that they're open to be able to look over there. Um, I did do some math homework for myself. Um, last time I was here, in case you didn't know, I did send in a, assigned, like eight people signed a thing saying they were okay with the RV where it is during the summertime. I did some quick math when I got home from work today and, um, kind of figured out that between April 1st and November 1st, the allotted time that the RV can be there, the RV would be there about 130, 140 days during that time because we, we take it out quite a bit. Um, and this is just, we haven't finished up our summer schedule, this is just what we have right now. So, um, the question also came up last time about children in the neighborhood and would it block the view from the driveway of the neighbor? That we don't have a lot of children in the neighborhood and the ones that we do kind of stay in their, their own yard. Um, I'm not saying they wouldn't venture off, but when they do venture off, they're usually running down the middle of the road and not using the sidewalk like most kids do. So, um, I guess we're just back here talking about this, what we talked about last time. You know, that doesn't state, because the size of the RV came up, it is a Class A 40-foot RV, so it's a big RV. Um, but the zoning board doesn't really, doesn't say anything about the size of the RV being there. The question is, I think, the setback, the, the concrete pad is setback, it's when the RV is on the concrete pad that it comes right up to the sidewalk. Um, so I don't think anything really has changed for that, so.
I'm, I'm not going to be participating in the deliberation, but I do have a question. Before the concrete pad was installed?
Uh huh.
Did you check with the town at all?
I did.
And did the town indicate to you that that would be okay to put that sized concrete pad in that location?
They did. The concrete pad is not in question. It has the four foot, it's four feet back from the front property line, a little over three feet back from the side property line. It's when the RV is on the parking, it's, the RV is what goes up to the, um, the sidewalk, not the concrete pad.
Well, I understood the issue not to be the con, the RV, but to be the size of the concrete pad.
Well, I think that what, if I, no, I am not a zoning person, but if, when I read the regulations, it's that it, with the amount of the, the size of the driveway and then the size of the concrete pad, it goes over the 35% that is allowed by errand court. I misread that when I looked at those regulations and I didn't think to ask the questions when I was talking to people upstairs. I thought that was 35% of the concrete pad alone. So that is, that's my error. I, I will take full responsibility for that, that's my error. Um, but we're looking for 140 days. I mean, I, I, I just, I don't know, I have a hard time understanding why we're here, to be honest, but so...
When the, when the past November, between November and April 1st, where is the RV going to be?
It is stored out at Wilkins RV.
Okay.
Which is out in church?
It is, yes. And, you know, I, I, I keep going back to this April 1st, November 1st, we don't get the RV till like the third week of May because we don't really go until Memorial Day weekend. Um, and then it's usually back in storage by the middle of October because I teach and then we run out of time to go, so.
So as, as I understand it, there's two issues. One being the way that the vehicle is parked, when it would be parked there, it's too close to the sidewalk and the road.
It goes right up to the backside of the sidewalk.
Right, so, so the zoning code requires a four foot setback and right now there's a zero foot setback.
Correct.
So that's one issue, is where the vehicle is parked.
Correct.
There's another issue, which is the concrete pad, which is the fact that there's too much concrete, non-permeable surface in the front yard. Correct? Am I understanding that correct?
To be parked on.
That's correct.
I mean, is it? So total area devoted to driveway and parking for premises for residential purposes should not exceed 35% of the front yard, which right now we're over that.
It's at 90, just nine, it's 991 square feet of the front yard.
Yeah, you're over it by 160 square feet according to the calculations on the zoning application.
Correct.
You know, this brings us back to the same issue of the box trucks being oversized. Um, for me, it's the size of the vehicle, it's the, the, the overage in the concrete pad, 160 feet, it's quite substantial. Uh, the safety coming up to, up to the sidewalk in, in the photos. So we, we are, we are back to where we are.
I'd just point out, Mr. Evans, that the difference between the box truck issue and this is not one of size, it's that the box truck is prohibited under the ordinance and the RV is allowed. It doesn't make any reference to size of the RV. But...
You know, and before this complaint came across your guys' desk, the, we, the RV sat in our driveway for three years and no one said anything. So, and it hung over the sidewalk and I know that's wrong. That's why we tried to be a little bit better neighbors and not wanting to break the rules intentionally, moved it over to the other side and, you know, people could walk hand in hand down the sidewalk. I mean, I underst, I do get your concerns, I understand that. But we are in the back of a cul-de-sac, so if anybody's back there, they're either lost or they know where they're going. We don't have a lot of children and not that I want to call my neighbors out, but we got boats in back, we got boats in yards, we got trailers in yards and, you know, I, like I said, this is a seasonal thing, it's gone by October, the middle of October.
I got a, I got a question for staff. Is, is the, I realize the problem here is the area of the paved dirt portion and the fact that part of that paved portion comes right up to the property line or has zero setback. Is there an issue with the RV being there, period?
Technically, under the code, um, as the applicant stated, the RV can be there seasonally. However, in order for it to be there seasonally, under the provisions of the code, it has to be on a paved parking area and it has to be with the appropriate setbacks. Uh, since the paved parking area that she has exceeds what the code allows and since the size of the RV, um, extends closer than what the setback allows, that's why she's here before you today because there's no way for her to meet those other conditions. So the RV itself is not an issue to be parked seasonally, um, but in this specific instance, she doesn't have the ability to do so without getting these variances.
All right, if, if the pad, if the concrete pad was reduced to the wheel, wheelbase length?
If the concrete pad was reduced, then theoretically, she could get under the 35%, but my understanding is based off the size of the vehicle and the location of her house, I don't think she would be able to get it, um, four feet?
Yeah, we did...
Setback from the property line.
We did look at that to see if we cut some of that concrete, even if we took it off the back or took it out the middle, because it's a solid, that solid piece of concrete, that the wheels would not, if we cut out what we need to cut out, the wheels would fall off the back of the concrete. And the stability of getting the middle taken out, we would, we would have to do some work to get someone up here to, to fix that. We'd probably call the guy who poured the concrete to come up and fix it, so.
That, that might be an option.
And the only way to meet the setback requirement would be to take four feet off your house?
Yes, and I don't think that's going to happen.
Well, we talking about setback of the pad or we talking about setback of the vehicle?
The vehicle.
The vehicle.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the size of the pad and then this, this setback for the vehicle. But you, without using that for parking, the concrete pad is perfectly fine there. It's because it's going to be used for parking.
No, it's, it, any paved surface, right?
Paved parking service, she's correct.
Yeah, so if we don't park on it, the concrete pad is going to sit there. And not look like it's doing anything but sitting in there, front yard.
Put up a basketball hoop.
Well, that's what we discussed, but I'd rather have the RV there. And it's at a little angle, we'd all be chasing the ball into the street, so.
Any further questions or comments from the board?
Just one simple one is, this stays with the property, they sell, they got a pad in the front yard. Do the new owners have to come in front of us? You know, they could, they could use it for parking? Do they have to come back in front of us or?
No. Right? Once we grant the minority vans for this, it, it runs with the property. So it runs from this owner to the next owner. Um, the next owner wouldn't be required to use it for parking, but they could. And they could park a 36 foot.
And not be here, that's right.
Okay, no, 30, 35 foot.
35 feet.
There you go.
Let's get that four foot.
Or they could use it for a basketball hoop if they wanted to.
Any other questions or comments from the board beyond, and maybe this is a question for staff beyond, further, um, you know, going further beyond the 35% parking surface on the property, there's not an issue with extending that pad to the street? I just, I just look at it aesthetically and hate that it doesn't, I mean, that there's grass and...
I would be happy to extend it as a second driveway, but we were told we couldn't do it.
Yeah, and I'm...
Yeah.
I don't know.
Just as clarification, the Commissioner of Public Works is the only person who has the authority to determine where right-of-way connections can and can't happen, so that even, just so this board understands that, you'd want to be mindful not to suggest or condition something that this board may not have the ability to do.
That was, that's what my, yeah, that's what my, I was getting at, I was looking for an answer like that, thank you. That's all. All right. Since the board voted to reopen the hearing, is there anyone that wishes to address this application? Anyone wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone want to talk to us about RVs or concrete pads? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm a neighbor. I live on the track. My name is Alan Accorso. I live at 201 Candlewood Road. I do not see a problem with that. Actually, it's, it's an asset to what it was before. None of the neighbors are complaining. She's got flowers, stone gardens in the front. It actually, it's an asset to the neighborhood, like I said. I don't see what the problem really is. I understand all the legalities that you have to deal with, but she spent a lot of money to try to make things right instead of parking it in her driveway, which nobody bothered her when that was there. Now she tries to do the right thing and she has this big problem after spending all this money. I wish you guys would all consider that. Very good neighbor. Very good neighbors, take care of their property. Just thought I'd mention that for you folks.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anyone else wish to speak with respect to this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing, move on. The next matter is also a tabled matter. Uh, application, um, ZB one-nine-one-zero-dash-seven, uh, pertaining to property at two-fifty-eight, uh, Saint Joseph Street. Is there, does someone wish to make a motion to remove this matter from the table?
Some moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? I'd forgotten that the last time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I abstained because I was not here last week. Uh, so, and we have, so the motion carries five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, and, uh, one member of the board remains absent. Now, having moved to remove the matter from the table, the next issue is whether or not the board wishes to reopen the hearing again. The minutes indicate that the hearing was closed, uh, at the end of, uh, the public hearing last month, so if the, uh, hearing were closed and it is not reopened, then my understanding is that those, uh, members who were here last month would deliberate and vote on the application without any further, uh, public input. On the other hand, if you wish to open, reopen the hearing, then there could be further public input tonight, and that would be a part of the, uh, record of the proceedings, and that would be, um, you would be, obviously take into account, in addition to the information that you acquired last month, whatever you acquired tonight, so. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to whether or not to reopen the hearing with respect to this matter?
I'd like to move that we reopen a public hearing, so we can hear from the applicant and anybody else.
I second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain, so the motion carries five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention, and one member of the board remains, uh, absent. So, having reopened the hearing, were you placed under oath last month?
Yes, I was.
All right, then you're still under oath. Well, actually, I'll redo it. If you'd raise your right hand again, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Both of you?
Hmm?
I said both of them?
Yes, they both raised their hands, they both said they did, so, all right.
Anyhow, my name is Jeff Reasonberger, from two-five-eight Saint Joseph Street, Arundicoid Lawn and Landscape, and we're here tonight to address our application to put up some new pole barns after ours, uh, uh, were, uh, burned or caught on fire, uh, on May third of this year. And, uh, we're requesting to put one barn on the site of the old pad and a second barn in the field, a larger barn out in the middle of our fi- five-acre parcel. And, um, I'd like to first, with permission of the board, address some of the points that were made by, um, an attorney last month, and I've supplied you with that letter, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read or not, but there's a few things we want to go through to address some falsehoods.
Let me just explain one thing, this is your opportunity to add to your presentation last month and to present to us, so how you decide to do that, what you want to present, that is entirely up to you, unless you were to go into things that are neither relevant or appropriate.
Right, thank you. So one of the things they mentioned was, um, weather creates an undesirable change in the neighborhood. And they mentioned that, quote, "The Weavers were unaware of similar structures in the area. However, the neighboring property to mine immediately to the north has approximately seven outbuildings. In addition, the property immediately across the street from me has two large pole barns." There's also a pole barn on Totem Trail just down the road, there are two barns further down Seneca Park Avenue, and there's two pole barns down Saint Joseph Street. And it's very hard for me to believe that they weren't aware of these barns being in the flats. And we have an illustration up on the board, which shows several, but perhaps not all of the barns that exist in the flats. And perhaps John could show you those.
Well, you're, you're probably better, Jeff. So this is your site.
My site is here, my neighbor's property, the Millers', is here, with all these buildings here. There's another barn down the road at Saint Joseph Street, there's another barn across the street on Saint Joseph.
Excuse me, Jeff, I'm so sorry, we have a portable mic, we're going to ask you to use that so that, for the purposes of recording and viewers at home, thank you.
So, my property here in the middle, this is my neighbor's property who, uh, is contesting the new barns. The neighbor immediately here to the north has all these buildings here, just down the road on Saint Joseph Street, at three-five-two Saint Joseph Street is this large barn, across the street at three-seventy-five Saint Joseph Street is this barn, three-fifteen Saint Joseph Street has these large barns. You go down to Totem Trail, it's not listed, there's a barn here, one-ninety-seven Seneca Park Ave, barn, two-fifty-one Seneca Park Ave, barn, two-eighty-four Seneca Park Ave, barn, three-oh-six Seneca Park Ave, barn. So, this is not out of keeping with the neighborhood. Another big factor was that they said that a forty-by-eighty pole barn, which is what we're proposing for the larger barn, is, uh, outrageously large. And they failed to mention that we are on a five-acre lot, and a forty-by-eighty pole barn is approximately thirty-two-hundred square feet, and that represents one-point-four-six percent of the property. The new barns are going to be one-story, the old barns were three-story. And that, that relates to whether the requested variance is substantial. Another item they brought up, whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. And the single biggest argument that I suspect caused the tabling of this was that they mentioned that their property values were negatively affected, which is a flat-out lie. The Weavers purchased their property in two thousand and five for a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. In two thousand and sixteen, their assessment was two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. When the town did their reassessment in two thousand and seventeen, they were raised to two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, six-hundred dollars, at which time the Weavers grieved their assessment to the town, but unfortunately, they were denied. And then they took the matter to small claims court, where their assessment was lowered fifteen thousand dollars. All things considered, between two thousand and five and two thousand and eighteen, their property value actually increased by sixty-three thousand dollars, or a thirty-seven percent increase. I really don't understand how my property is negatively affecting theirs.
So, uh, good evening, John Sharaba with Lantec. Um, Jeff asked me to step in and take a look at his file, uh, so that's what I've done. I think Jeff did an excellent job with his letter back to the town board explaining his situation, and, uh, just to go through a few points that I looked at when I reviewed his file, as Jeff mentioned, this is the flats, uh, it historically is an agricultural area, which has now, um, become more of a commercial area in some parts, so there are seven barns located within a half-mile of his property. Also consistent with those barns are several businesses. You have a plumber, a, uh, HVAC company, another landscape company, a photographer, a psychologist, so this, this area is accustomed to the resurgence of businesses that have taken over some of the foreign operations that were once there. So, um, so it is definitely in the character of the neighborhood. The other issue is this barn that is, as Jeff mentioned, thirty-two-hundred square feet, it's a hundred and twelve feet from the south property line, it's a hundred, it's over three-hundred feet from the right-of-way. And if you look at the site, it's well-screened. Um, Jeff's planted a lot of pine trees along Saint Joseph, and along his south line, he put a rather large and expensive fence along his south property line, also, also added trees, so he's in the character of the neighborhood, he's screening this area, so it's not negatively impacted the character of the neighborhood. The, uh, proposed barn is a warehouse, um, it's in a flat lawn area, it's well-graded, all, the only utility that's going there is electric, so there's no negative impact to the, um, physical area. I know that, uh, the neighbors have shown pictures of Jeff's property and shown on his application the white barns that are, uh, north of their site, but those are the barns that they're talking about, the Miller barns. This barn would kind of block that, so they won't see those ugly old barns, this would be a brand-new aesthetically pleasing barn, so it's probably going to add, um, aesthetic to them and also buffer them from that business operation, which is an auto mechanic, so noises they're hearing from them might be the Millers' and not Jeff's operation. Um, as Jeff said, you might feel that this building is substantial, um, but we feel it's not. If you were to create, the zoning allows one-acre lots, he's got five-acre lots, so if he kept the existing house and, uh, created three more new lots down there, uh, you'd figure two-thousand-square-foot lots with other outbuildings and pools and decks, you're looking at over nine-thousand-square-foot of impervious. Those, those buildings can be positioned in such a way that they would be closer to the, um, southern property line. So there'd be a lot more impact possibly if Jeff was decided to move out of Arundicoid, move his business and subdivide this property into code-compliant lots. We wouldn't need any variances for what I've shown, and that, you know, is in character of the neighborhood. What is not in character of the neighborhood is the angle of the property to the south of Jeff's. That house is rotated ninety degrees, uh, from the right-of-way. You're not going to find any houses, or nearly any houses in that, in the flats, or even Arundicoid that have that orientation. So that issue is kind of self-created by the neighbor to the south, not Jeff. So their front door looks out onto Jeff's property, not onto Saint Joseph. You can't regulate the view shot of someone's house, you can't tell the neighbor to change that house was oriented that way, they bought the house, they knew it. And they also bought the house when they knew that Jeff operated his business since nineteen ninety-nine there. So, there's, uh, issues related to that.
Just before you go further, I'll interject here. My recollection is that approximately a year or so ago, in addition to the barns that you are referring to that were there, we also granted a variance for the construction of another barn that was going to house horses, although I don't think that ever came into being, but we had approved another barn.
On this property, or I'm not familiar with that? Oh, further down? Oh, okay, yeah.
In that general neighborhood down there.
Yeah. So the other thing, you know, as far as, uh, you know, the site and that, the area, you know, it is well-screened, as I mentioned, you got the fence, you got the trees that Jeff planted, um, and the alleged difficulty is not self-created, um, he had a catastrophic fire that almost lost his whole business, lost most of his equipment, and so he needs the place to, he needs to rebuild, you know, not only for security reasons for his equipment, but functionality, he wants to be a good neighbor, he wants to house most of his equipment in a single structure. Uh, Jeff touched on it briefly, um, but his three-story buildings, if you added up, um, the westernmost building, that's, that was seven-hundred square feet, just the first floor, that was three stories. The middle building that up, was also lost, was twelve-hundred square feet, just the first floor, and the existing bu- building that remains is eighteen-hundred square feet. So that is, um, if you add that plus the new, um, thirty-two-hundred-square-foot building, he's around seventy-three-hundred square feet, um, is what he's looking for, what he's looking for, yeah, if you added that in. Um, what he's proposing is sixty-nine-hundred square feet, so he's less, um, than he, than he had before. So it's really a pre-existing, non-conforming situation if you utilize the, the three stories that were functional to his business. So that's kind of a quick overview, I think, uh, we all know that, you know, this is a hard thing for Jeff to be here, you know, he's been here before, and really like to resolve this once and for all, we keep coming back for these zoning issues, and, uh, we hope that you grant the variances as requested.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of this application?
My name is Michael Bernardo, I live at seven-ninety-two Oakridge Drive, Rochester, New York, one-four-six-one-seven. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to provide some information, some comments regarding Jeff Reasonberger's request for a variance to build a new pole barn. First, I've known and worked for Jeff for almost ten years. During that time, I've observed him in multiple forms, and he is always professional, courteous, kind to his clients and employees. Second, Jeff recently suffered a devastating loss, which has been discussed over a few times in his business, that few of any of us can relate to, over a half-a-million dollars worth of equipment destroyed by a fire. Since that time, he has struggled to continue in his business to provide a quality of life for his wife and two children. Third, Jeff is one of the most kind and giving individuals I have ever known. He has given back to the Arundicoid community a myriad of times, over the past twenty years, by noted donations of time and material to make Arundicoid a better place. A poignant example occurred the day immediately following the fire, where he, where he honored a previous commitment to help with some landscaping in one of our schools. Now, can you imagine a devastating fire for a half-a-million dollars, and then next day, he went and honored his commitment? I challenge you to do that. I submit to you that after suffering one of the most devastating losses in his lifetime, down to that commitment, as a, takes a special person. Fourth, just sole motive for wanting to rebuild the new pole barn, which has been discussed, in the area he described, is to be proactive by storing any flammable tools and equipment away from the other equipment stored in the other barns. The primary goal would be to minimize any loss if it occurred, since only one building would be affected. In the previous fire that Jeff suffered, there were two buildings that were burnt basically to the ground. By this one pole barn being separated, that couldn't happen this time. This past loss again burned two buildings to the ground. Fifth, Jeff needs to erect this new building immediately to be able to continue his business, support his family, and continue to give back to the Arundicoid community. It should be, it would be a travesty for the board to deny this application for variance. One last comment regarding the complainant, he, just like you and I, have choices where we live. If I don't like my neighbor, for whatever reason, I can move. I submit he has the same opportunity, and moving is also a variable option to alleviate that issue. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Good evening. My name is Peter Weisar, and I'm an attorney with McConville, Consonite. I represent Mr. and Mrs. Weaver, who are, uh, with us this evening. And I don't want to belabor the points we made last, uh, last time we were here, I'm going to stand on, um, on the arguments we made in our letter, but I want to highlight a couple of, a couple of points. Um, my understanding in general is that the Weavers do not object to the fact that the business is there. They know that they moved in and when the business was already there, but what they object to is the ever-increasing intensity of the business. And, um, in particular, in this application, they don't object necessarily to the fact that they want to rebuild the pole barns, but what they object to is the, uh, the thirty-two-hundred square-foot pole barn to being placed right in the middle, right in view of their property. I, I think if it was pushed further to the north, as we talked about last time, I think that would be less objectionable. Um, so, there, the property values, we did indicate last time that the property values were impacted. We, we did bring with us tonight a copy of the appraisal report, and I have a copy and we have a few copies we can leave with the board, but, um, my understanding is that while the property did increase in value over time, I believe there were some improvements, uh, made to the property, um, and when the property was, uh, grieved and, uh, the, the assessment was reduced as a result of a small claims assessment proceeding, it was reduced in, uh, as of October twenty eighteen. So in this period of time when property values keep ever increasing, the Weavers' property was assessed at two-forty-six, but it was, uh, the assessment was lowered to two-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars, and the, uh, the appraisal report indicates that, uh, among other things, that the property is influenced by adjoining commercial landscaping company. So, um, and I'll, I'll, I have more copies, but I can pass this to the board, so you have that.
Was the, um, was there a written decision with respect to that small claims proceeding that cited any factors in determining that the assessment should be reduced?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay. And then the next question that I had was, so, um, my understa-, uh, do you disagree with the figures that Mr. Reasonberger presented, that the purchase price, the prior assessed value, and then the increase and reduction, which still results in, uh, I believe about, I'm trying to recall, two-sixteen to two- which still results in, I believe, about, I'm trying to recall, 216 to 230-something? Is that right? What's it assessed at now?
I think it was 232.
232. And previously, it was assessed at 216?
246.
No, no, no.
Before that.
Before that. Bought at 169, right?
Yeah, and then we had some additions, addition put on an in-ground pool, so that raised the, you know...
So it was raised up to 216, I think it was. 218. So it's 14,000. The net effect of the reassessment proceeding was to increase the value by 14,000 for tax purposes, correct?
Well, it was reduced. It was assessed at...
It was at 218, right? It went to 242, and it was reduced, or 246, and it was reduced to 232.
As a result of the assessment proceeding, correct?
So it went from 218 to 232. So it increased by $14,000, the assessed value, after the town's high assessment was adjusted by the small claims proceeding, right? Okay, so we're all in agreement on, I just wanted clarity on that, because I was getting confused by all these numbers going around.
And I think that our point is that the market value was affected, as evidenced by the appraisal report, that even in this market, they do indicate that that commercial property next door did have an impact on the value of the property, which helped to convince, to lower the assessment as a result of the challenge. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
And I just wanted to clarify one other thing. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is a business that, as I understand it, has been there for about 25 years prior to the Weaver's purchasing and improving their property, right?
We were there in 2005.
And he's been there?
I think he said 1999, I think he said.
So a while before you were there? Okay, alright. And the other thing that you made reference to was that it affects their view, right? You said something about it affecting their view?
From our windows at our house, into backyard, if we're over, it'll...
This is one of my things that I've always had a problem with. You're entitled to the view up to the end of your property line. Once you go past your property line, you don't have a claim on a view.
Right, right, understandable.
If you want a view to keep it beyond your property line, you buy that property. Otherwise, and we had the same discussion about this, talking about the project that we approved off of Thomas Avenue, that there, I understand they're doing environmental stuff and everything on. The people on, I can't think of the name of that street that backed up to it, were telling us about how this would ruin their view and all of that. We've had that discussion over on Densmore with the residents over there on Kennedy Circle, who came in and talked to us about the effect that the development that was proposed there, which we didn't approve, would have on their view. And I, just because this is publicized, I just want to make it clear. Your view is not something that is properly considered one way or the other by us, I believe. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Jim, can you repeat the question?
The view of a neighboring property owner and the impact on their view is not something that I see in the factors to be taken into account, other than the effect that it would have on the neighborhood.
Correct. I mean, you probably could consider that as part of the effect on the neighborhood, but it's up to this board to weigh, you know, how much value that has.
Respectfully, sir, I believe that it does impact whether or not there's an undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. And also, when you consider the substantial nature of the variance requested. So I believe your code permits a 900-square-foot, I think they, it's considered a garage, I believe, is what it's considered under the code. So a 900-square-foot structure. And there's a big difference between a 900-square-foot structure versus 3,200-square-foot.
Well, you're indicating that this is a garage, a pole barn?
I think that, isn't that what it's called under the code? I'm not sure.
So, and I'll chime in here. So in our code, it doesn't call it a garage, but anything that's over, any storage structure that's over 200 square feet then has to meet the requirements, setback, and limitations in terms of dimensional and square footage maximums of a detached garage. So you're not calling it a garage, but you have to meet the standard that would be set forth for a private garage.
Which I believe requires it to be, I think, no more than 900 square feet without a variance. And I also believe there's a requirement that it can't exceed the footprint of the building.
Excuse me, ma'am. Thank you.
So to the extent that, you know, that a 3,200-square-foot structure is larger than a 900-square-foot structure and would impact the view, I think that that would be relevant. But I do understand your point about, you know, the view. I don't know if you have any other...
Just one of my pet peeves, that's all.
Unless the board has any other questions, then we stand on our papers.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who wants to talk to us that's neither in favor or opposed to the application? Step right up, ma'am.
First of all, let me apologize. I was just trying to find out what the construction of the pole barn was going to be. And he explained to me that it was going to be metal fabrication. I own a property...
I'm sorry, excuse me, ma'am, for the record, your name and address again?
It's Karen Arva, 143 Vinton Road, Arundicoy.
Thank you.
For the record, I have a property at Thousand Islands. I had a 22-by-36 metal construction building put up, the base of which is red, the roof is hunter green. And I was interested in finding out what color the metal fabrication was going to be, because I thought maybe it would be more aesthetic if it was more farm-like, country-type of coloring, like the old red barns with a green roof. If that would be more pleasing to the neighbors. I think it's kind of charming. I'm not living there, but I'm used to seeing these all the time. And, you know, put up this pole barn, make the colors pleasant, so it's more like a country-like setting, a rural setting, maybe put some, he's in landscaping, I'm sure he'll landscape it beautifully. And my final thing is, if you don't like the view, you can always put up a fence. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to address this application? Seeing none, does the applicant wish to respond?
I guess I'll start. I'd like to just reiterate that I understand the code is 900 square feet. And as I stated before, Jeff had 7,500 usable square feet with the structures prior to the fire. And after rebuilding what he wants to, along with the 3,200-square-foot building, he'll be at 6,900 square feet. So he's less than the pre-existing condition. Also like to state that, you know, we don't have a problem moving the barn to the north. As I said, it's 112 feet from the south line. We'll move it another 50 feet north. As Lee just said, you know, put up a fence. Jeff put up the fence two years ago. Jeff put up pine trees 12 years ago and put up additional pine trees a couple of years ago. So he's doing everything in his power to screen. He understands their issue and wants to be a good neighbor. So that's just two points that I picked up from what was said. Jeff, you have more?
One of the things my builder said to me when he heard that this motion was tabled last month, he said, "Wait a minute, how far is this building from your neighbor's house?" It's like 250 feet from his house. That would be three or four or five regular lots in the town of Arundicoy, the distance from house to house. But again, we're talking about five-acre parcels down there. And there were some other statements made in regard to the view, which I don't know how the view was taken or the pictures were made. But again, primarily, it shows my neighbor's property, not mine. And this will be a nice, beautiful building. We haven't decided on the colors yet, but the other buildings are tan with brown roofs, pretty nondescript. They blend in. I think a lot of you said you had a hard time even finding the property. And John, I don't know if you want to address any of the issues with the property next door?
You just gotta stack them, man.
Yeah. Don't really want to go here, but Jeff asked me to speak to this. He said, you know, this is kind of a tit-for-tat with the neighbor. And unfortunately, he asked me to look at the code related to their property. So I looked at an aerial photo. One of the things that was picked up at the application before us is there's a separation requirement from a driveway or paved surface to a property line, required four feet. It's obvious, based on the structure that's there, that that is not compliant. They have a driveway that's right up to the property line. The other issue that's there is their setback, their rear yard. Their front door faces Jeff's property. Their rear property is to the south. That requirement is to be 50 feet. That appears to be well less than 50 feet, possibly 25 feet.
I can appreciate why you want to get into that.
I really don't want to get into it, but...
I really don't see that that has anything to do with the issues that are in front of us tonight.
I understand, Chairman.
Alright.
Just definitely want to make sure where are those issues, so...
Oh, we've had many of these cases in the past where we've had neighbors that are at odds with each other.
Yep. Jeff's just trying to do his business and go on with his life, and it seems to be getting brought back here every couple of years.
I think we understand that.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
One of the things that you mentioned, moving a building 50 foot to the north, is...
That's not an issue. We have no problem doing that.
Okay, thank you.
So are you asking us to amend your application to move it 50 feet to the north?
If it helps.
Or are you asking, agreeing that if we were to impose that condition, you wouldn't have a problem?
We're fine with that, the latter statement.
The latter, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanted to clarify procedurally where you were at. Alright, the hearing with respect to this matter is now closed. The board will be in recess until 9:15.
Alright, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good night, sir. Um, next application relates to 2841 Culver Road. Uh, this is an unlisted action, I believe.
2841, um, sorry, what's the number?
It is.
Number three. With the packet that everyone received with the application, there was a short environmental assessment form that was completed indicating that the uh um there would be no negative impact. Um, does anyone make wish to make a motion uh to make a negative declaration with respect to this matter?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good night, sir. Um, next application relates to 2841 Culver Road. Uh, this is an unlisted action, I believe.
2841, um, sorry, what's the number?
It is.
Number three. With the packet that everyone received with the application, there was a short environmental assessment form that was completed indicating that the uh um there would be no negative impact. Um, does anyone make wish to make a motion uh to make a negative declaration with respect to this matter?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a question. Was it conditioned that there'd be uh that they would allow the other businesses in the plaza to utilize that signage? When the time came, or was that just a uh a point that was raised and not resolved?
It was a point that was raised, uh and the indication was that it would be possible to add on, but um so far we don't have any applications for any of the other tenants to add on, so.
Okay.
Any um further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed. No abstention. One board member remains absent.
Alright, thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good night, sir. Um, next application relates to 2841 Culver Road. Uh, this is an unlisted action, I believe.
2841, um, sorry, what's the number?
It is.
Number three. With the packet that everyone received with the application, there was a short environmental assessment form that was completed indicating that the uh um there would be no uh negative impact. Um, does anyone make wish to make a motion uh to make a negative declaration with respect to this matter?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed. No abstentions. One member of the board rema- remains.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we should also probably address the fact that she originally requested an area variance for signage as well. Uh, but previously stated the fact that she no longer wants to pursue that at this time, so if that could be withdrawn uh at the request of the applicant.
Certainly. I think she had, well, let me ask you a question. If she withdraws the application and then finds assuming we grant the variance, and then later finds a a very a sign that she likes, would she need to reapply?
Yes, she would.
With a new fee?
She, yes, she would need to come before the board again.
If we tabled it indefinitely, she wouldn't need a new fee, right?
That's correct.
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we table the area variance with respect to the sign.
Second.
Any uh discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the area variance with respect to the sign is tabled by a vote of six in favor, no opposed, uh no abstentions, and one member absent.
She did.
And then the one thing we would just note is if the applicant were ever to want to revisit that portion and the tabled matter, we would likely, we would be noticing as a public hearing at the time.
Okay.
So that it would be available and the public would know when that was going to be coming to this board again.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so now in front of us is the use variance application. Does anyone wish to make an uh motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion that we approve the application um as submitted. Um, uh point of clarification, um we don't, we can't address the idea, the concern of fencing around a property and um, we're just looking at the use variance, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm I'm.
Well, I think that we could impose a condition with respect to um fencing or a suitable barrier between the property and the property to the west, correct?
Cause, cause there's two issues. Your safety for Culver Road and also the property um maintenance in the back.
Sure, I mean, yeah, you could make that a condition.
Okay.
Okay, um, with with the conditions that um uh for fencing and safety be installed if she gets approved by the um, um, by the New York State.
Office of Children and Family Services.
Services.
So the fence, the condition is that fencing to be installed where?
Um, around the property.
Okay.
For safety.
I'd, I'd uh wonder why we'd want to fence the entire property. I think it might be more prudent to ensure that whatever outdoor play space or outdoor uh spaces utilized by the children on a regular basis is fenced in. Um, I don't know that um that it's that it's necessary to to fence and say the majority of that space is parking lot.
Point taken. So for safety of any outdoor.
Activities for children.
Facilities for children and also to along the western edge of the property for the neighbor.
Correct.
Now I think I have to go into the character of the neighborhood and that stuff, right?
Mm-hmm.
I do?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it changes the uh character of the of the um of the neighborhood. Um Okay, there we go. Thanks very much. Yeah, it it doesn't change the uh character of the neighborhood. Um there's no real alternatives. She looks like she's expanding her business. She can't go elsewhere, but the property is held vague.
Alright, but this is, this is a use variance.
Use variance, okay.
So it's the section, the test is the next section of the back sheet down.
Yeah, uh, no reasonable return on the property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um so there's no real, so there's no reasonable return on the property, I think by putting a business in, puts it back on the tax room. Uh, it's a unique circumstance. The size of the building doesn't really lend it to be used for anything else. The cost would be substantial to turn it into a single family home or a home. Uh, it doesn't really change the character of the neighborhood. As everyone pointed out, there's several um childhood, child facilities around. And the problem isn't self-created or self-created to the fact that she wants to move her business.
I will uh second the motion and I'll add to the uh proposed findings, the following. With respect to the reasonable return on the investment, the uh Turkish society has owned this property since 1979. It was a number of years ago that they moved out. They've had leased tenants using the property uh in the meantime, but none of the tenants have uh indicated desire to own the property. Uh, and under the uses that are permitted, the size and location of of the building would not lend itself to things like a firehouse, school, um, and the other uses to convert it to a single-family residence uh would be um cost prohibitive. Um, we, a number of years ago, we had a similar application for with involving the church property slightly to the north, uh which uh was in front of us for a use variance application by a dentist who wished to purchase the property that the church had outgrown. And that was a larger building and he had the, in that case, it had sat vacant for a number of years uh without any uh buyer. This property has sat vacant uh now for a number of years. Uh, tenants in and out, but no, nobody who's interested in purchasing it. It's a unique circumstance because this is a relatively small uh structure. It's surrounded by 95 parking places uh and a substantial amount of pavement, which to rip up pavement, convert it, uh and do all the work to convert would simply not be uh practical. And it is unique in that it uh is bordered on three sides by uh roads. Well, there's a town lot in between the uh Vinton and the property, but essentially it's boarded bordered by uh three uh streets, uh one of which is a major thoroughfare and uh it is uh about an acre in size. It will not substantially negatively affect the character of the neighborhood. There was testimony that there are a number of childcare facilities in the immediate area, so adding another childcare facility is not going to significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. There were concerns expressed by some of the residents regarding the uh safety and how the property would be uh maintained. I think that um having an owner occupied and used property is much preferable to having a property that's owned by an organization that has not used the property itself in a number of years and has relocated to another uh location and as the neighbors indicated, was not really involved in in maintaining that. By insisting that a fence be put on the west side, that will alleviate uh the concerns that were expressed by the neighbor immediately to the west. By ensuring that the play area is fenced will ensure the safety of the children, which was another concern that was raised. And clearly, this is not a self-created hardship. This has to do with the um factors that relate to the building, its location and its uh character. And the purchase of the property is contingent upon the variance not uh having purchased it thinking that she would get it. The um there was one other thing that I wanted to add. Oh, yes, the the concerns about how she operates the daycare, how many children are there, how many staff are there, where uh how things are run. Those are all concerns that uh are addressed and will be addressed by the Office of Children and Family Services that will be required to um review the application and certify uh in accordance with the many standards that they have. Uh, we are not, um, we have no authority to uh impose any conditions on how she operates her daycare. It's simply a question for us is can she operate a daycare in that location? And I believe that by imposing the conditions we've imposed, we are adequately addressing, or at least attempting to adequately address the concerns that were raised by the neighbors and if as several of them felt she would be unable to maintain the business there, then she's going to own the property. So, those are the additional findings. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed. One member of the board remains absent. There are no abstentions. There are no abstentions. Next item for consideration by the board is the application pertaining to... I just filled out the wrong form.
Record of motion?
Yes, I filled out the record of motions for...
Want me to?
Twenty-eight forty-one. Culver Road, I wrote all over the record of motions for Shore Drive.
Okay. If Michelle doesn't magically have a spare in the, here, I'll run up and we'll, we can have a-
Alright, we'll correct that.
We can correct that after the fact. If you want to just cross out at the top of your sheet, the address so that we have the, it corresponds to the case you just voted on.
Well, I'll transfer it to the right one.
Okay.
Alright. Moving right along, the next application is, pertains to... Four fifty-four Pert Avenue. Anyone wish to make an application with respect to the Pert Avenue property? This is the two storage sheds.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve it as-
Thank you.
As written. I don't think it's a substantial request.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes.
Thank you. I, I don't think that the, the application's a substantial request. I also don't think it'll impact negatively the character of the neighborhood. This is, if I understood the application correctly, replacing a shed that was on the property with two smaller sheds. There's, you know, some maybe unreliable survey and, and mapping there. So the existence of a fence on a property line and building up against that fence, those are non-self-created issues. Again, I don't, I don't, forgetting one of those conditions right now. But in any case, I don't see it to be a problem.
The alternatives that don't require a variance?
Alternatives that don't require a variance, again, would be to move the sheds, but the way that they're laid out, I think, looks really nice in the back. And again, he's sort of doubling one of those sheds as a, as sort of a fence there, a gate along the other side of the house. So again, I don't think unreasonable with what he's proposed.
I'll second it. And do we have to put in the record about the neighbor agreeing with the... Four fifty-eight, they agreed to?
I think it's part of the application that, correct, that both neighbors were-
Correct. It's part of the application and I do have it within the, the testimony from the applicant.
Okay.
Could I add something to that? I think we should put in the record, even though we're granting the variance for the neighbors, we are not authorizing encroachment on their property.
Absolutely not. That's correct.
I'll make the motion with those amendments.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. One member of the board remains absent. The next item... Be the application pertaining to two fifty-eight St. Joseph Street. This is... An unlisted action, is that right?
Yes.
Yes. So... I believe that...
Draft resolution for seeker purposes?
Huh?
Do we have a draft resolution for seeker purposes?
Did we have a environmental assessment form?
Yeah.
It was, I believe, the draft was provided at last month's meeting.
Okay.
Jim, do you want it? I got it.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm fine. I just, with respect to that, is there a motion for... Just-
Do we need to read this whole thing?
I assume you already have?
I've got a draft of one.
Yeah. So, does everybody have a copy of a proposed draft resolution with respect to a negative declaration for seeker purposes? Do they have this? Do you have this?
Yes.
There should be two.
Got two of them.
So does someone want to make a motion with respect to the seeker?
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we make a determination of... What's the wording I want?
Negative declaration?
Yeah. Negative declaration. Do we need to read the whole resolution into the record?
No, you can incorporate it.
Okay.
Excuse me, just want to make sure that in, before you vote on the resolution for seeker, that you also indicate that it's an unlisted action for the purposes of seeker. I don't know if somebody already said that.
I thought I said that.
Maybe you did. I apologize if I missed it.
But if I didn't, it is an unlisted action for seeker purposes. You want to move to adopt the resolution that's been printed and prepared and?
Yeah, I proposed we adopt the resolution that stated, actually, November fourth, two thousand nineteen, with a finding of nega- negative declaration regarding the proposed variance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oh, no, I'm not. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain and there's one-
I abstain as well.
You abstain as well?
Mm-hmm.
So there's four in favor, two abstentions, and one member is absent. So the motion carries by a vote of four in favor, no opposed, two abstentions, and one member is absent. So... Now we turn to the application itself. Does someone wish to make a motion? I think that's in here. It's in there. We just referred to the written resolution and adopted that. Alright, does someone wish to make a motion with respect to the application itself?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to not screw up this motion again, so. Alright, so I make a motion that, that we approve. The application has written with the ability to move the, or in fifty feet north.
You want to make that a condition, that the building be located fifty feet further north of?
An, an option. Can we, not a condition, but if it's better to move fifty feet north, he can either as written or fifty feet, feet north.
Okay.
Okay. So it depends on if it solves the issue.
So the condition would be that it be built as located on the application or up to fifty feet further north?
But there's no, there's no requirement that the-
There's no requirement.
That the applicant build it.
Correct. No, the condition is that it'll be built as located on the application or up to fifty feet further north. So he has the option of building it where it was located or ten feet or twenty feet or up to fifty feet north.
And is that, is that, does that just apply to one of the, one of the structures?
Yeah, to the big one.
To the large structure.
Yeah.
The other structure's going in the same footprint as the building.
Right. With respect to the-
The largest.
I think it was a forty-two hundred square foot structure.
Thanks, I-
Only.
I believe it's, I believe it's thirty-two hundred square feet.
Half is never my strong point.
The freestanding, it's the freestanding pole barn-
Eight times four is thirty-two. Yes, not forty-two. Okay.
The, there's no, there's no, no change of character to the neighborhood. We've discussed it in length, that there's multiple barns. It used to be an agriculture area in the flats. He's pointed out that there's multiple barns in other loc- locations within a square mile of his facility. There are alternatives. There are no alternatives requiring the variance. He's actually reducing the footprint of the total barn area from what was destroyed. I don't think that the request is, is substantial. The effect on the physical environment is minimal. In fact, because he's reducing the overall size of the storage area, he's actually improving it by moving it to the center of the property. He's actually protecting his neighbors left and right from future catastrophe that may happen. And the situation is not self-created since it was a fire that destroyed his properties to begin with. Did I miss anything else?
That sounds about right.
A second? Does everyone have a proposed resolution with respect to this application? Zoning Board of Appeals Resolution for Case Number ZB one nine one zero dash seven?
Correct.
Is that the, your motion is to adopt this resolution, is that correct?
My motion is to adopt this resolution.
Okay. And that was seconded by Mr. Upson, is that correct? Alright, is there... Any discussion?
Are we willing to condition the movement of the barn fifty feet north rather than suggest it as an option?
I, I would like to keep it as an option rather than a requirement.
I mean, it's, it's my feeling it is a substantial request. It's the one piece of the, the application that, that I, that concerns me is understanding that it is a reduction in the overall size of the barns that were in the square footage, the barns that were on the property or the structures that were on the property. The location of thirty-two hundred square feet of those structures isn't, is, is new and is substantial. We could give in the placement of the, of the adjoining properties. And while I think they have taken measures to, you know, plant shrubs and bushes and things of that nature in between the properties to try to make it as appealing as possible, I still think that alleviating the, how close that is to the adjoining property, I think, to me, lessens the the, the substantiality of the, of the request. But again, that's just, I'm curious how you guys feel. And it's not my motion also.
I would like to keep it as an option. I think, you know, if the... If Mr. Reasonberg speaks with his neighbor and feel that that's an option, that's for them to work out. I think giving that prescription doesn't alleviate the long-term issues that exist. So given that they can definitely work it out, I think they should discuss it and if they come to fifty foot by reasonable discussions, then they should choose that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions besides myself?
One abstent- abstention.
So we have four votes in favor. And we have two abstentions and one member absent and none opposed. So the motion carries. Four votes in favor, two abstentions, one member is absent. Built as located on the application or up to fifty feet further north with respect to the thirty-two hundred square foot. That was the motion that was- So this motion, this resolution and this motion go with this resolution? Alright. Counsel is asking for us to clarify this matter. My understanding is that the motion and what was carried was that we would grant the variance by adopting the resolution that was circulated in advance of the meeting, which is modified in two respects. First off, it, the motion to adopt the resolution was offered by Mr. Evans and not by myself. The motion was seconded by Mr. Upson. And the condition that it would be built as located or up to fifty feet further north is incorporated into the-
Resolution.
Resolution. Is that, if that is everyone's understanding, please say yes.
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 Is, is it, does anyone differ with that understanding? Seeing none, that is... We'll move on to the next case. Which is, I believe, eighty-three, no, seventy-one Shore Drive.
I'll make a motion, Jim, that we-
First off, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes.
I'll make a motion that we grant the area variance as written based on the following facts and findings. The granting of the variance will not result in an undesirable change, an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There's really no alternatives. He already has a fence there. It's, it's not the right height. It's four feet than what he's proposing to purchase. It's four feet than what he's proposing to, um, purchase. Uh, but he does mention in his application that he has an eighty-six pound dog, um, a German shepherd that he liked to keep within the confines of the fence. And the fence was there when he, uh, when purchasing the house. It was just dilapidated. The, uh, request is not substantial in the fact that he... The fence existed when he bought the house, like I said, but, um, he just wants to upgrade the property and, uh, and is applying for a six-foot fence. No event, uh, there would be no adverse effects, um, from the area variance, as many people have fences throughout the town of Arondacoit. Um, and just looking at his property, he does kind of have an interesting property, how it slopes down at the bottom there where his tip. So, I, I understand where he's coming from regarding mowing his lawn. Um, and so, um, the problem necessarily wasn't self-created. He purchased the property and the fence was there, and so, he's actually bringing it forward to help, um, uh, so he can actually take care of the property.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed. No abstentions. One member of the board remains absent. Last item for us to take under consideration is the application pertaining to eighty-three, uh, Governor Terrace. This is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll move that we approve. Uh, the variance is written, um, as much as it distresses me that there's more than, um, uh, required non-permeable surface and parking surface on what could be green space in a front yard in Arondacoit. Um, I don't see alternatives, um, given the size of the vehicle, uh, that the, uh, property owner has, um, the size of the property, the location of the house, um, the location and size of the driveway. Um, the variance itself is not, um, overly significant. Um, we're talking about four feet, um, towards the front of the yard for the, um, uh, the location of parking the vehicle, um, and only a matter of about a hundred and sixty square feet, um, of actual pavement or asphalt. Again, I don't see alternatives. The situation is self-created. Um, however, they did not create the layout of the lot, um, and I think that it was created with the best of intentions. Um, and, um, I think that... I think I hit everything.
I believe so. Does anyone, uh, wish to second the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we limit it that it's only, you know, from April first to November first only?
Well...
I know that's what it says, you know?
Well, that's not in front of us. Uh, what's in front of us is whether the concrete pad can continue to exist in its present location.
She would be limited in that respect, just based off the code anyways.
And whether she can park it closer than the four-foot setback is what's at issue.
Okay.
So, uh, the motion is made by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Evans. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh... Any opposed?
Nay.
And I am abstaining. And Ms. Bickett remains absent. So, the motion carries by a vote of four votes in favor, one opposed, one abstention, and one member is... Remains absent. Alright. I believe that concludes the letters that are on our agenda for this evening. With the exception of... With the package, did everyone receive, um, a draft of the minutes of the October meeting? And then subsequent there to the amended, uh, minutes of the October meeting?
Yes.
Does everyone have an opportunity to review the amended minutes of the October seventh meeting?
Yes.
Can I ask what the amendment was? I can't find it.
Aye. Michelle, can you tell us what the amendment was?
I tried to find it and I couldn't.
I believe on the first version, I had Mr. LaPerry still on my form letter in the minutes, so I omitted Mr. LaPerry. And the second one, I found, uh, I believe it was a typo.
Typo, alright.
I believe it was just a typo.
Alright. Just... I was just curious.
No, that's okay.
Alright, does someone wish to make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of the amended minutes of the meeting held on Monday, October seventh, two thousand and nineteen?
I'll make a motion. By Joe.
And is there a second?
Second.
Alright, uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain because I wasn't present, and Ms. Bickett is still absent, so motion carries by a vote of five in favor, uh, one abstention, one absent, and none opposed, so motion carries.
Is it four in favor?
I think it was five.
Five, I'm sorry. I can't count anymore.
Half wasn't my strong suit. Okay, so we are concluded. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Arondacoit Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.